Town of I'm sorry, Amanda, I keep doing that to you. So I'm going to call the order of the town of and or the board of selectmen meeting, special meeting for Tuesday, August 31st, 2021. And we're going to start with the pledge of allegiance. The pledge allegiance to the
Of the United States of America. To the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, we're going to go on a public speak. We'll start with Lynn and Doug Wolf.
Hi, we're just residents, 291 Lake Road, interested in listening to what's going on about the traffic pattern changes.
Okay, thank you. Kathy Plosi.
No, thank you. I'm all set.
Kimberly Persson.
Nothing at this time. Thank you.
Louise Goodwin.
Just listening. Thank you.
Bill and Lorraine Listwell.
Well, we're listening, but we really appreciate you having the meeting. Thank you very much.
Yes, thank you.
Mary Holder.
Oh, no comments. Just wanted to hear about the traffic changes. Thanks.
And then somebody dropped off. And then we have a phone number, 860-208-2345. All right, no comment from that resident?
That's me. That's me, the town attorney.
Oh, Dennis. Dennis, I have you here.
You can just mute him now.
No, I know.
I was muted. That's why I didn't respond immediately.
Okay, so I think Thank you, Dennis. Greatly appreciated. Jay, I know you're on the call. I'm sure you want to talk about the traffic patterns. Do you want to participate in public speak?
No, I'm all set.
Okay, you got it.
Wait till the subject comes up.
All right, so we're going to go on to item three, and the first item is 3A, the Creamery sign at the Veterans Monument Park. Jeff, if you'd like to sit there and review the information you provided us.
Great. Um, so
Do you want me to share my screen and bring it up?
Sure, you can bring it up. Bring it up, Eric.
Do I have the power, Amanda? There we go. Okay. The new traffic was going to be so exciting. Everyone's on the call. Okay. There we go. That should be it.
So what had happened is, once we had really started to look at the sign, and we've gotten the original estimate, when you got the original approval. Bonnie, who is a Andover resident, went down and took some pictures for the design team. And then the design team came back to me and said, you know, that is actually in perfect line with the axis of the sun's helip, you know, the orbit during the summer. And it's it's subject to very significant amount of UV rays. And it's probably the reason why this sign has gone, has decayed a lot faster than the one at Indy. So what they suggested, and they actually looked around, and they actually, this, this, what the quote they gave us is what the Arizona Parks Department uses for their signs. It's a UV resistant application that they put on, it's UV resistant base and procedure that they use to 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 create the sign. And it has a 10 year guarantee versus if we go with pretty much what we had before. They're saying we're going to see significant fading within a couple of years. So I've received, I've received the the initial design from them. I've sent it to Sky Yeomans and the rest of the selectmen for review. My thought is that, you know, the money we put into this park and how it's the centerpiece pretty much of Andover on Route 6. That we spend the extra $600 and and get a sign that's going to last a while, it's going to stay for a few decades versus, you know, something that's going to deteriorate, and we're going to have to go through the situation, you know, this scenario all over again, so.
It's 100 bucks a year. I make a motion that we accept the change to proposal and move forward with the sign.
A second to that.
Okay, further discussion? All right, I'll call the question. All those in favor?
Aye.
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 5-0. None opposed and no abstentions. So we're good to go. All right, Eric, you can take that down.
Okay, do you want me to take it down or go on to the next item?
Go to the next.
Okay. So
Can you, can you possibly just make your screen a little bigger? It's just a little
It's a little what?
It's a little hard to read.
That's why they have made glasses, Paula.
Well, I'm not ripe old age like you yet.
I'm starting to question that, if you can't read that screen.
Okay, can you read? Can everybody see that?
Paula, can you see that?
So it's very simple. This is from the board to resolve once again to authorize me to sign for grants that we've already got. You will have noticed you signed the identical thing two months ago, but they have since decided in their wisdom that we have to sign one when we're applying for the grant and when we agree to receive the grant. So you guys need to sign this. We get $9,500 for planning and zoning to do their affordable housing. That's it. As long as we all agree with this resolution.
I think when we all sign it, we'll all agree to it. So is it going to be the town hall?
We can have a copy in the town hall for you to sign if you're all make a motion, be in agreement with it.
I make a motion that we are in agreement with it, as is, and we should all sign it by the end of the week.
Second.
Okay, Paula, seconded that. Further discussion, all those in favor?
Aye.
Right.
Aye.
Okay, keep going, Eric. We got the road signs resolution for town of Bolton.
Okay, yep, here's the second one. Bolton has decided now that towns have more autonomy over their own traffic control via more recent state legislation. They intend to install some additional stop signs on Hebron Road. Hebron Road, as you know, is the Bolton portion that what we call East Street turns into Hebron Road. There's only one that affects us. There will be, they intend to put a stop sign, a three way stop at the intersection of Webster Lane. And they have requested permission to install a stop ahead sign on East Street in Andover before that sign.
Wouldn't it be more fun if it was a surprise? No?
Someone want to make a motion to pass that?
I make a motion that we pass the resolution.
All right, that's funny in itself, right there. Seconded it. Anybody? Anybody? Excellent. Let's go. All those in favor?
Aye. Jeff, it's like Ferris Bueller's Day. Anyone? Anyone?
I got it. Okay, so review and ex bond recommendation from capital improvement planning committee on hiring site engineering firm and architect for proposed community senior center.
Okay, that that was a slight typo. It shouldn't have been CIP. It should have been the building, Community Center Building Committee. So I just have a quick update. At their last meeting, they motioned to go with design professionals, which was one of the bids. And they unanimously approved 5-0-0 to go with design professionals. And recommend that to the Board of Selectmen, but at the same time, they asked me to reach out to BSC, which was one of the other firms that they liked also, and ask them if they had an architect they were tied in with. And if so, whether we could get a quote for that. So I did, they do have an architecture firm they dealt with. I did go out and get a bid from the architecture firm. So we do have the cost basis, and actually, BSC plus that architect is a lower total cost than design professionals. One of them is $29,600, one of them is $34,000,050. So I guess the question is, in your court, how the board wants to proceed. I can send you all the information on all the quotes, if you would like to review them prior to your next meeting. Or do you want to just go with the building committee's recommendation, or what would you like to do? How would you like to proceed?
And I Before, wait, before we start, can I ask a question? Who's on the building committee? Because I think it's Scott.
Scott.
And I'm on that as well.
And Jeff Murray. All right. So, so Eric, just go over those numbers again, and and can, is, do you have the estimates?
Uh, yes. So do you want to see, what is it that you want to see? Just the the bottom line numbers, or you want
What was the number that we okayed at the meeting?
You okayed at the meeting using design professionals, which was $34,000,050.
So the new quote is 15% less, going with the other firm?
Correct. Correct.
So it saved us about 15%. The other advantage is because that, I think, if we look at this objectively, because the architect is an outside firm, if we go forward at that point, we may be done with regular engineering services, but could still retain the architect for further phases.
So you know, in either case, either of them, the design professionals brought their own architect in right from the beginning. Yeah, well, it's not their architect. They, it's a firm they partnered with.
Oh, it is. Okay, I thought it was in-house.
Yeah, no, it's definitely not in-house. So we would end up in what Ed Sirisley's intention was to get through the point where we had reasonable cost estimates, and we could go to the public and establish funding. And at that point, go for, you know, do an RFP for an architect. If, in fact, we decided to change from the one who got us to that point.
I, I, I think that what Ed Sirisley and the rest of the board wanted to do is keep a, keep the engineer and design person together. These two are together. The other firm has one that doesn't work with them. And I think the one that we originally picked, they had the, the design firm is, works with that company on a regular basis. The other one does not. And, and
Is, is that, is that correct? Because I thought, yeah, I thought Eric just said it's a company they work with.
Well, I, so I reached out to the project lead for BSC. And I asked them and said, you know, what engineering firm are you most comfortable with? And he gave me the engineering firm and the partner he would most prefer to deal with. And that is who I got the information from. So it's already, it's certainly a firm that they've worked with. You know, because that is their, you know, that's what BSC would prefer for an architect, if they had the tools.
Can you tell me the name of the, the new architect quote with us?
Yeah, it's Moser Pylon Nelson.
Do we know the name? Do we know the name of the firm that BSC is going to be using?
Uh, BSC was the Moser Pylon Nelson.
And then what about the other?
Uh, the other one was
And when we say the other one, we're talking about the first company that, that the board approves, correct? The original bid.
Yeah, the other one was Capital Studio Architects, which was the company that uh, design professionals you know, was alive.
So my question is, why is this being brought back to the board of selectmen?
Well, Scott, here's what I would say. Um, right now, our purchasing procedures are not really all that clear. And I really don't know whether I have the authority to sign a contract with either one of these firms, and if so, whom? Or whether that should spring from the Board of Selectmen or Board of Finance or both?
No, it always has to come back through the channel. So once it's approved by whatever committee it is, whether it's building committee or what, pick a committee, road committee. It always has to come back through. It's no, no different than purchasing a loader or anything else. We're, we're assigning services, we're asking for services. Because the committee may not know if there's a conflict or another issue, it should always come back through here. And then the Board of Finance ultimately has to say, yeah, we actually do have the money, and here's where it's coming from. And so there, there's more than one person that has to say yes. So that's why it's coming back through.
The money was already approved, Adrian.
Yep, so that means the, but the Board of Finance still has to say, yeah, go ahead now.
I mean
Still has to go back to Board of Finance.
If, if that is what the procedure is, the problem is really just isn't a written definition of what that procedure is, as far as I understand.
Yeah, a committee can't approve spending unless it's budgeted. Like, if we have a, if we give a budget to that committee and say, all right, you got $500,000, go build a community center, that's one thing. If it's a rec mission, we give you 500,000, $5,000 and say, do some rec stuff. But the capital improvement committee doesn't have a budget. So it still has to come back through channels.
Excuse me, Adrian, what was that thing you just said? The capital improvement committee does not have a budget?
Listen, listen to me. I, I'm just gonna, I'm gonna ask a question. Did we approve? Did we, as a board, at one of our last meetings, approve the, the use of a firm for the engineering services?
No, we, we approved going out for an RFP.
And to, to, to not exceed a certain amount is
$50,000, exactly. Yep.
Exactly.
Okay, so, so now we're, we've done the RFP, Eric, and you have quotes or you have proposals from two engineering firms?
Well, we have proposals for four, of which the committee was interested in information on two. Uh, the two lower cost proposals.
So Scott and Jeff, did you, did you, you picked one?
And then committee picked one.
But you, but you picked one without information from the, the competing firm to go apples to apples, correct?
You picked one, but then as a committee, you also asked me as the administrator to go back to the first firm and pursue that with their architect to get an apples to apples comparison, which is all I did. And I may know, the choice is not mine. You can do with it as you wish.
Just correct me if I'm wrong. Didn't Brandon say either we're completely qualified?
Either or, right?
Either or.
So if they're both qualified, I would, I personally would go for the less expensive one. It is a 15% difference. If, if you're, if you, if you both are saying that you aren't comfortable with that, you'd like to go with the first choice, then I would like to go back to the committee. So they can, you know, have a meeting, have a, a quick meeting, emergency meeting, whatever you need to do, and, and have all the information in front of you. You know? I don't want to contradict the committee, but I also, I also want you guys to have all
At what meeting was this oversight from the Board of Selectmen specified? Because I can't recall anything like that. I can't recall oversight from the Board of Selectmen in any meeting, Adrian. I'd, I'd like you just to tell me where, where you heard that from.
Well, Scott, when did you, when would you ever give a no?
This
I don't want to make an argument with you. I'm saying, if you don't want to go with the less expensive one, then, then I would say that we, as a board, could send it back to that committee, so you guys can have an apples to apples comparison. That's all.
All, all I'm saying is, now it's going to be another month. And what's going to happen next month? Is the Board of Selectmen have to go back over it again?
I have no problem making a motion to go with the less expensive proposal that covers both. I don't have a problem with that. If you want to go with the more expensive one, then I would personally think that it would be best off, given that it's a 15% difference, to go back to the committee, so that now the committee has all the information. I had actually had a, a talk with Ed Sirisley about this before you guys had your meeting, and unfortunately, you guys just didn't get the information back in time. You know?
May I just speak because I'm on a committee and tell you how we came up with that money, please?
I would come up with what money?
Can I just explain to you how we arrived at selecting the first, the design professionals? We selected them because they came in at 29.6. And what hap, what happened was, they said they have the architect on board. And, and Ed Sirisley said, okay, for 5,000 more, we're intact, we've got everything we need. However, whatever, however, what, what we did ask Eric to do, and he has done yet, hey, now we found out, because thank you, Eric, for that. And we found out now, tonight, that it is 34,050. I mean, excuse me, it's 29.6 for the other company. We did not have a figure on that because it was our understanding that that company came in at 34. So now I'm a little bit baffled about the price. I don't know about you, Scott.
Yeah, I'm, I'm really baffled.
Yeah, yeah.
Do you want us to send it back to your committee to make a decision now that you have apples to apples or not?
I think we should, don't you, Scott? I really do think we need to discuss both options and, and the reason we chose
The other firm was 34 without the engineer, and now it's coming $1,500 cheaper?
Yeah.
How was that?
The other firm wasn't 34. BSC was the lowest cost for just the site work. However, the other firm was in, but it only, they only provided site work in their original proposal.
Right, right.
Even though design professionals was a little more expensive at the site work, their site work proposal was 29,000,050, whereas BSC Group, their site work proposal was $23,000 even for roughly equivalent bids. Design professionals also added an alternative option to include the preliminary architectural drawings. And then you asked me to go back and get BSC to come up with an architect that would do the same thing.
And their architect, and their architect was $5,000, Eric?
Uh, their architect was just over $6,000. So, which netted a total cost of around 29,000 for BSC and around 34,000 for design professionals.
Right.
So it, so let me see if I
Scott, Scott, can I, can I ask, can I ask if you do take this back to your board? And that we put this on the next meeting and move this along at the next meeting?
Do you think it's possible, Scott, that you guys could have a emergency meeting so we can
My only question is, Jeff, I still don't understand why it needs to come back to the Board of Selectmen. If you already gave them that, uh, meeting, a $50,000?
No, you, you were requested to get an RFP for no more than $50,000, not to sign an RFP. To be clear.
We'd have to sign, we'd have to sign the contract anyway. We'd have to approve the contract with this company. You just get the contract in place so we can prove it and get this moving along.
I mean, I don't know what the issue is with this. Do you not want to go back to the board, Scott?
I, I, I'm just, I, it just seems like it's languishing, that's all.
I don't want it to languish at all. I, I personally, I'm perfectly happy saying, we take the low bidder that has both, they're apples to apples, and we move forward. But if you don't, if you'd rather the board have, take a look at the apples to apples, and just in case there's some other reason.
Let, let's do it. Let's do it, Scott. Let's have a special meeting.
All right.
Let's do it.
Will we just, tonight, can we just approve it for the higher amount, whatever the board goes with, that we just can move forward with that?
How are you doing that? You're, you're going to give us the and listen, you just need a contract. You're going to sign a contract with such and such. We need to approve that that contract's signed. We need to give Eric authorization to sign that contract.
I mean, we both, we basically approve at both vendors, correct? So why don't we just have a special meeting of the building committee? We'll, we'll review the additional the additional information that Eric provided, and then we'll, then we can make the decision. We'll just move forward. And if we approve it, both bids to exceed that amount.
That's, that's fine. I, I think you're right. It's middle ground. So I would, I would make a motion that we authorize Eric after a meeting of, in a, you know, a special meeting of the building committee, that we authorize Eric to approve from one of these two vendors, signing a contract.
That way, it doesn't come back to us, so we can just
That's, that's my motion.
Okay, I second that.
All right, further discussion, seeing none, all those in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Is that okay, Scott?
Thank you, Adrian, for finding some middle ground before it languishes further.
Now, listen, I, I'm totally on board with moving it forward, Scott.
3E, a town road review recommendations from Circuit Rider pri, prior to striping this fall.
Okay, so I gave you a big list of recommendations from the Circuit Rider. The only one I had anticipated talking to you and revisiting again with the road crew supervisor here was the line striping. And the reason why we'd like to do this now is because we need to get striping, and we have a blank slate on a lot of our roads in the Lake District because they've been re-chip sealed, or they've been chip sealed. And so the question becomes, would the board consider the Circuit Rider's recommendations? Or do you want to keep with what you agreed on originally, which was just center line striping in the Lake District? And if so, do you want to go with single or double stripes?
And what is their recommendations at this point? Just give us the highlights so that people can understand what we're talking about.
So their recommendation on Lake Road would be to skip the center line striping and just edge line stripe with basically either nine or nine and a half foot travel lanes.
But no center lining?
No center line.
At all?
Correct.
I don't know if I like that. Jeff, if you live over there, you drive it every day. What's your take on this?
Well, what you're doing is you're putting a line off the edge of the road so that you don't go off the side of the road. You know, I've been living with no line in the center of the road for two years now, I think. It hasn't affected me. I, I know that there's some residents that are concerned that the center line on a foggy night gives them something to shoot for as they're driving down the road. I can understand that. I also can tell you, I walk the lake every day, and my biggest problem when I walk is that people don't sit there and move all the way over to the other side of the road. I don't know why. That and speed. But I don't, I don't, I wouldn't have a problem with striping the edge. But I also could understand striping down the center, and if I read the information correctly, we'd have to double stripe the line. We can't do a single line anymore.
Is that correct? Is that correct, Eric?
We're not supposed to do single lines because the manual on uniform traffic control does not really recognize single yellow lines. So enforcing somebody passing another vehicle, for instance, in the Lake District is problematic with just single lines. And it has some implications if there's actually accidents and somebody's over a center line.
What's the downside of doing double lines in the center?
Twice as much money.
How much more? How, how much money are we talking about, total?
Twice.
No, but it's how much
The amount of money.
So I, I think last
10,000, 15,000, what's the
Last year, we spent around 9,000. But you, as a board, had already decided to go with the more expensive epoxy coating, because it lasts longer. And that generally at least doubles the cost of it. So figure, you know, roads, if you did all roads, you know, you could be more than 20,000, 25,000, something like that. That's just a rough guess. We'd have to get actual numbers.
I mean, I'm, what's
Correct me if I'm wrong. We, oh, correct me if I'm wrong. We, we, we already made a motion, and we agreed to stripe, to stripe the Lake District. That was, that was a motion a couple of months ago, that we already did that. That was, that was a motion a couple of months ago, that we already did that.
Yeah, we, we talked about this because not, not so much for the people that know the Lake area. We were, we were thinking for a safety issue, if somebody's driving the Lake area and they don't know the roads very well and it's foggy, we felt that we needed those lines there.
I also feel like, I, I also feel like people tend to ride the middle more when there's no line and it makes them go a little faster, you know?
Yeah, I think the, the, the double cell line might be a little bit, it might be a little bit intimidating. It might slow some people down, actually.
Yeah.
The, the science doesn't bear you out. The science says a road with no striping has the lowest overall speed. The next fastest is edge striping only, and the fastest is center line striping. You know, with no edge lines.
That's the data?
That's the data, as far as flat-out speed control. Now, there's a lot of other things that go into it. I mean, the point the Circuit Rider made was if the concern is visibility in the fog, it doesn't matter whether you can see a center line or an edge line, as long as you can see a line can maintain your lane.
This is Lorraine Leswell.
It's not, it's not.
Excuse me, uh, I'm, I'm, hold on for one second. Uh, when, when we're done at public speak, we'll, it'll allow you to talk. Sorry about that. Um, but listen, the question ends up being white lines or yellow lines for this board? That's basically, Eric is bringing back the Connecticut State Circuit Rider information. If we want to stripe with double, uh, yellow down the center, let's just vote on it. If we're gonna do sidelines, let's do that as well.
Eric, you're throwing your finger up. What do you want to say?
Before we do, just one thing, is that what had happened is you had made a decision to go with yellow lines. And at the next Traffic Safety Committee meeting, they were not particularly happy with that. And they asked me to revisit that with the Connecticut State Circuit Rider, which is why I invited them to review that road and all the roads in town, hence the recommendations you got. So that's the reason why it came back to you.
In a very, in a very short answer, why were they not happy with it?
Right, because they don't want.
So they, so the.
Universal, but yeah, sure. I mean, the, the walkers and dog walkers would be happier with edge lines and no center lines. Um, and the people who just drive presumably would be happiest with center lines, because that's what they're most used to.
So we have a Lincoln dilemma. Some of the people, some of the time, all the people, all the time.
Where is the correspondence with the dis- dissatisfaction with the lines? I mean, this is, the discussion we're having is pretty much a verbal dissatisfaction. Was there any verbal correspondence sent to you, Eric?
Uh, no, it was just the last, the last time they had a meeting, they've they're.
Do you have minutes?
Disbanded. I don't have the minutes. You know, unfortunately, I think.
At this point, we're dealing with hearsay at this point. I mean, I would like to see something in writing saying that they're dissatisfied.
When, when is your plan to do this? When do you have, when, Jay, when are you planning on striping the roads? What's your timeline?
It would be, uh, probably the, by mid-October.
All right, so Eric, can you have, um, members of the, the road committee for our next meeting and we can get this done? Is that acceptable to the rest of the board?
I have a, I have a crazy idea.
What's that?
Put a survey up on the town website, people want.
All right, let's have the, the, uh, listen, the people that were on that committee actually care about the Lake area and care.
I think, I, I, are, are you implying that people that don't live in the Lake District don't care? I think everybody cares.
No, I think everybody cares, but I think putting up a survey doesn't sit there and, and give you enough. I mean, you want to mail something out to everybody?
No, I want to put it up on Face- let's throw it up on Facebook. We've got at least nine hundred people that float through there on any given day. Let's at least get some sort of, I don't want to rule by fiat. I, I want to get feedback from people.
All right. Do you want to hear from just, just the Lake, um, you know, people that live in the Lake area?
I think everybody in town uses those roads. I use it all the time to cut across too. I mean, not, certainly not as much as someone that lives on the road, but, you know?
Go ahead and put it up. Get as much information as you can. But Eric, have the people from that committee, please attend the next meeting, so there's no hearsay.
And, and those people probably will have some good information. Yeah, let's do that and let's have, um, on, on that line, let's have a public comment for that line during the meeting. Not at the beginning or the end during the meeting, so those people can talk, all right?
Okay, so here, here's my question. Who's, who's creating the survey? And what's going to be the questions on the survey?
Um, I will get together with Amanda DeMar to put something together and we'll put it on the town Facebook page.
Uh, I'm gonna actually, um, and I would put it out on Facebook. There is a data analysis person that came up to, uh, the Board of Selectment at one of the budget meetings.
Yeah.
And she was, um, critical of our development, of our questions for the ballot. Uh, she would be a great person to sit there and get to help us write questions for things like that.
Right, have her contact information? I was there, I was there when, uh, she said that, Jeff.
Forgot her name.
I have, I have, I have her number. I'll send it to, uh, who do you, who you, do you want that?
Oh, or, or Adrian.
No, I'll do it. Paul, Paul's got stuff going on. Don't, don't drop it on Paul. I'm, I'm the one that stuck this out there. I'll take it.
Yeah, he stuck his neck out. Let him do it.
I'll take it.
Go ahead.
Text me the info, Scott, and I'll get it taken care of. We'll have it up.
While we're discussing striping, the person also suggested that on both Gilead and Long Hill, we do double center line striping and edge striping on those roads. Um, as more appropriate. Is that something the board wants to continue? That's something.
Can I, wait, before you even go, like, you gave a laundry list of items that were on this, uh, on all of the areas within town. You got, you gotta tell us the numbers, the financial numbers. And then, you know, we only have so much of a budget. You're not gonna get all that striping done within the budget we currently have. I mean, simply put, you, we could go over every item that you have in here. And unless they're free, there's nothing, you know, if they're over the budget we have, we have a problem.
Well, he's digging it up. Can you, can you multitask, Eric? Why is it they want edge and double there, but not on the lake?
Because, one, those are roads that tend to, uh, remember, they put that in conjunction with raising the speed limits on those roads. Um, and anything you do to make a road have an illusion of being a narrower road, decreases overall speed. So, but because they're gonna trade, they're gonna send it up to a thirty-five mile an hour road, it's appropriate to center line stripe and edge stripe. That's, that was true.
Here's my question, and, and do they realize that the data that we got off of Lake, but we had people rolling through there, like averaging like fifty miles an hour?
Yeah, you think that's right? Sure.
But we didn't narrow, we didn't narrow the road.
No, you know, I mean, everybody speeds on all of our roads.
No, but I mean, you just said that, that anything we could do to make it seem narrower. It seems to me that if we did edge striping but nothing in the middle, that makes them feel like they got one big lane to just run down. Do you know what I mean? And that's why I just, when you said the data leans, lends itself towards, you know, like nothing, you know, versus a double, I, I, it doesn't make sense to me.
But, right, I, I'm not saying I disagree with you, but um, data is what data is. If you want, I'm more than happy to forward a study to you that talks about that. Um, if you want to read it. I, I mean, look, I don't have a dog in the hunt, you know, honestly, I don't want to stripe anything in the Lake District. I would much rather, it's much safer as a pedestrian or cyclist to not have any striping in the Lake District, as far as I'm concerned. Because it'll, all striping, right? So, so i- if you want to save money, as far as I'm concerned, don't stripe it at all. That's what I prefer.
Jeff, what's your opinion of that?
We already decided as a board to stripe the lake. I, I mean, it's a question to me, uh, okay, if the, if the road committee wants to disagree with us and we want to listen to an alternate opinion, fine, I can understand that. I, I told you the last time we voted on it, I don't need the, the stripe down the middle as a resident. I don't need it as a lake, but I'm only one of hundreds of people that live on that lake and, and there's a lot of other people that would like the center line because they use it as a guide during a foggy night. Okay, I get it.
Yeah, but your name does have first in front of it, so.
Well, you know what? I didn't get every vote, Adrian. So, you know, it's, it's the reality of the situation. So, I, I'm just telling you, I don't, I don't, if you put a, a, a stripe down Lake Road, is it going to impact me? Yeah, I'll probably get mad every once in a while in the morning when somebody decides they don't want to cross the yellow line and get out of my way. That will be the most infuriating thing for me, as far as driving down the road with a yellow line. I get it. It's not gonna, you know? So, I, I, all I'm saying, we, we just agreed to hear from the traffic committee.
We did.
And bring it up at our next regular meeting. We'll put it on the agenda. We'll put it up first. We'll let everybody talk during that section and go from there.
Right.
Right? Perfectly. Can we move, I mean, there are a lot of items on this document that Eric provided from, from, uh, you know, from.
Right, is there, is there any cost?
Do we want to talk on these?
Do you have a total estimate if we followed all their recommendations?
No, I mean, I, I mean, we're, you know, following all the recommendations would be years down the road. I mean, I was not, I, I'm not presenting everything. I'm saying these are all the recommendations for the Circuit Rider. If we're gonna pick off anything, it would be the simplest thing, which would be, period.
All right, Scott, just make sure you text me that info for that person, so I can try to reach out to them ASAP.
No problem. And, and Eric, does Circuit Rider provide you any documentation, or is this just your, your notes from the meeting with Circuit Rider?
Uh, mostly my notes. I mean, we did go back and forth with a couple of emails. She sent me mostly for the realignment of intersections, because that's harder to understand. Um, pictures of specific areas and methodologies for doing it on a temporary basis, is what she sent me.
Okay, so let's move on.
If you would like, you could probably, I could probably arrange to have the Circuit Rider at the next Board of Selectment meeting, and you could ask her questions yourself if you so desire.
That would be fabulous, personally.
Is that what you want as a board?
Any objection?
I mean, I'll try. I can't guarantee, but I'll try to get her.
It's fine. We'll put her at the front of the meeting.
Thank you.
And then, uh, unlike our last regularly scheduled meeting, so we're dealing with this, there will not be any secondary large other items other than normal business.
We're, we're picking them off right now, Jeff. That's why they're having this meeting.
Let's go. Three F, American Red Cross Blood Drive. When is it scheduled, Eric?
Uh, you got me. I think they wanted to do.
He said October twenty-eighth.
Or November twelfth, one or the other.
What do you need from us, Eric?
Rule?
Do you want to do it?
Sure, why wouldn't we?
I don't know. I don't have any feeling for a pro work on.
Anybody on the board have a problem with using the community room for a blood drive?
Nope.
Everybody's got to wear masks, right?
Yep.
Good to go. Um, you, you need approval from us? Do you want a motion?
Sure, make a motion for it.
Gosh, all right. So I, I motioned that we allow the American Red Cross to use the community room on either October twenty-eighth or November twelfth to carry out a blood drive.
Schedule, schedule permitting, seconded.
Okay. Well, further discussion, all those in favor? Hi.
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 Paul, you in? Okay. All right, so let's move on to, uh, three G mask mandate.
I don't have anything new other than what I've sent the board, so, um, unless there's something specific you want to do or motions you want to make, I can ignore that.
Anybody?
No, I feel like if it needs to be done, the state should be doing it. It shouldn't be left to the towns, personally.
Well, the only part of this mandate that we placed was for the town hall and then the library wanted to follow suit.
Yep, yeah, but I don't think we should be putting it out there for everybody else.
No, we're not. That's not the plan.
Okay.
All right. Um, ordinance review. We have an ethics ordinance that was put in our package. Anybody have any questions related to the ethics ordinance?
No. You want to hear from me on that?
Not really.
Who said that?
Sure, Dennis, you got five minutes on it. No, you got three.
I, you know, we, I threw this in because it's been sitting around for four or five years now. And I don't think anybody asked for it, except a member of the public did.
No, it's come, it's, it's come up a couple times. Uh, it's, it's, we, it just, we need a bunch. It's kind of on the list.
I have no problem, Dennis, with what was your.
No, you did a good job. It makes sense, so.
The only, the only issue I ever have with anything like this is, is the members, there were five members that were talked about this. So we have to find, have, we have to find five members that are not elected officials to serve on this board. That will be the biggest.
I don't think they can be on any board.
They can't be on any board.
Any board, no.
So, I have no problem putting this in front of the town and having them approve this ordinance.
Do we need to do, do we need to review these ordinances individually? Does anybody have any issues with any of them?
Eric, so, so my concern with it is on page four, under who the board is. I don't like the fact that the alternates only serve terms of two years and the regular serve terms of uh, three years total. Um, and I, I don't like the way, I think you should just elect them for four years. You know, every four years, you should elect all the board members and all the alternates personally, just to make it easier. That's my own take on it.
I mean, if I was gonna tell you, Eric, I would sit there and rather every board go alternate. You have two members go two years and three members go another two years and you.
Yeah, I, I would go back to two and then all, you know, uh, for your first board, you go three and two, and then after that, it's every, so you're always changing somebody out.
Yeah, you're always changing a portion of the board. You're not changing the whole.
Yeah, no, and you do two, and you do two-year cycles, because I think four years for a lot of people is a long, is, that's a long commitment. You know, I think it's, it's a long time, personally.
Well, you can always resign.
It is, it is.
You know, I don't remember why we did it this way. Uh, this was, uh, this, this was a Mansfield ordinance that I have adjusted to fit, um, Andover. It's, it's simpler. I made it a little simpler, a little more, uh, appropriate for a smaller town. Um, I don't remember why we, uh, we had, uh, two, uh, alternate serving for two years. Um, doubted, I didn't know that anybody would ask that question, but you know, I just want to go back to what Jeff said about the difficulty of finding people to serve. And in a, in a town the size of Andover, that is a legitimate concern. So I would suggest maybe that we just reduce the, the size of the Board of Ethics to three members with no alternates. Because that gives you, uh, enough members to do the business of the, of the board. And, um, you know what? You're not gonna have a lot of cases. No, nobody does. The only time you had, we had a problem up in Mansfield fifteen years ago, maybe, maybe twenty, was when, um, the Board of Ethics was taken over by a group of people who just didn't like the town government. And they were, uh, using it to, um, you know, against the town government to act as sort of a shadow government. And that doesn't happen everywhere. And, uh, I doubt it'll happen in Andover. So, uh, one of the reasons why this ordinance is so good is because we worked on it. For over a year, went through about twenty drafts. And it is, um, uh, let me just give you the features of it, the most important things. Is unlike a lot of, a lot of ethics ordinances, it does not address personal conflicts. So if you are, if you give an opinion about something. And then you turn around and vote on it three months later, it is not a conflict of interest. It's just your personal opinion. The board, the, the ethics ordinance only addresses, um. Uh, uh, problems when you're, you're going to gain financially. From your actions on the board or on some kind of agency. And it's limited to that, so you don't get a lot of cases. And the other thing it does, which could be controversial.
So Dennis, we're not going to have any cases moving forward, you know? And.
You won't have many.
What I would recommend is make it three members and one alternate. So in case one of the members can't make it, the alternate can sit in a boat and you can actually get something done if it ever comes up. I mean, because I'm assuming this does not have to be a regular meeting board. It's only on a case-by-case basis. So let's sit there and say, Adrian, because he would be the person that I would be most concerned about this ordinance. So he does something and you know.
I think he should be on the board.
Careful, Dennis, I know where you live.
Alright, so just, I, that, that was, that was really the only thing in the whole ordinance when I went over it was. The number of people and just getting them to serve. So I would say three people and an alternate. Anybody else have a problem with that?
No, I agree with that, but I would also cut the, the serving time down to, to two-year cycles. You know?
That's fine. I, I, Adrian, I think what you're going to find is you're going to find, you're going to have people that want to serve on this. Because it's important to them. Ethics is important to them and they're going to be repeat servers. They're going to serve again and again and again and again. We're not going to get those people off this board, which is fine. Um, because I don't expect to be in front of the board, just like I know the other four members on this board don't expect to ever be in front of it either. So, let's go. I, I, I have no problem.
So you want to change it to three members and one alternate? And if you, if you do, if you authorize me to, to write that, then you can approve it tonight.
So we author, we'll make a motion to authorize you to do that and reduce the terms to two years because Adrian's not wrong with that.
I would second that motion.
So Dennis, I'll make a motion that we authorize you to make, uh, adjustments to section five on the Board of Ethics. Uh, three members and an alternate serving two-year terms.
Will do.
Okay, um, seconded, seconded by Adrian. All those in favor? Hi.
Hi.
Okay, uh, so I mean, other ordinances, I, I, I'm, I mean, I read them. I didn't have any problems with them specifically. So the citation ordinance, the blight ordinance, the fine ordinance, or the minor ordinance, did anyone have any problems with any of those? I mean, the ethics one was definitely the longest.
Right. Did the building official have any, did building official have any concerns with blight?
One, one thing we're going to need is two people for the blight ordinance though.
Yeah, and you're going to need, you're going to need a citation officer.
You need a citation officer and a blight officer.
So the blight officer is always the zoning enforcement officer by default, not generally the building official.
That's right in there.
Right, did they take a look at these? To see if there's any issue? Are they comfortable with them?
And then we're going to need an ordinance officer.
Um, the, the Z E O, I don't think has reviewed this version of it. Um, but there's not a lot of difference between this version and the last version. The only thing this really does is it takes out the, before the provisions only got triggered. For an abandoned building or an abandoned structure, and now it can be triggered even for an occupied structure.
Okay.
So.
Alright. And, and they looked at the previous one and were okay with it.
Review if you want to see is, um.
I just want to know that it's been looked at by the person that's going to have to deal with it the most.
We can, we can leave the blight ordinance to our next meeting and have the, the Z E O look at it. So that they're comfortable with it before we, we move it to the town.
They, they've got to deal with it the most, that's all.
No problem. Does anyone else have a problem with that? No, okay, so we're good there. Um, so can we move the, the ethics, the citation, the fine and the minor ordinances? Uh, um, ordinance to the town meeting on the twenty eighth? Anybody have a problem with that? Okay, then I'll make a motion that we, we move the ethics ordinance with adjustments. The citation ordinance, the fine ordinance and the minor ordinance to the town meeting scheduled for September twenty eighth.
Second it.
Right, uh, further discussion on any of that? All those in favor? Hi.
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 Alright, um, is there any correspondence, Eric, that we need to know about for this meeting?
Uh, no.
Right.
So just, just so I can recap and make sure I've got it. At this point, you want me to refer the blight ordinance to the zoning enforcement officer. And probably the, the Chair of Planning and Zoning Commission for Review. You would ask that the circuit rider, Melissa, uh, be available at the next Board of Select meeting if possible. And you want as red, many res- residents or members of the Traffic Safety Committee. Um, at the next meeting.
Correct. I'd also like it noted on the agenda for that meeting that we will take public comment. During that, on specifically and only on that, during that section.
So what he's saying is we'll take public comment on every other issue except the tra- the traffic issues. And we will allow people to speak during that section.
Yes, please.
Sure. Alright, um, so we're going to move on to public speak and we're going to go through this, um. Jay, you're the first one in the block in my upper right corner, so Jay, you have anything to say related to any of the other issues?
Uh, no, I'm all set.
Alright, Jay, thank you for all the work you do. Kathy Plazin?
No, thank you. I'm all set.
Alright, um, Jeff Murray, no, so, uh, Dennis O'Brien, is there? Kimberly Person?
Nothing at this time. Thank you.
Alright, Louise Goodwin?
All set, thank you.
Uh, Eric Berry?
Sorry, I was muted. Nothing for me, thank you.
Okay, Diane Grenier? Diane has walked away from the computer. And Sloan, you're there, but you don't really want to say anything. Okay, um, I think that's it. Diane Grenier, I'm going to give you one more shot. Okay, Diane is good. Counted her out. She, she tapped out. Alright, um, anybody want to make a motion to adjourn?
I motioned to adjourn?
Oh, Diane Grenier made an appearance. You lose Diane. Sorry, we're all saying goodbye. All those in favor of adjournment, bye. If you're in favor.
Amanda, Amanda, before you hop off, can you just, uh, text me what a good time would be to, to get ahold of you tomorrow? I don't want to impose if you have a meeting or something going on.
No worries, tomorrow, anytime between nine and two works.
Alright, oh, alright, great.
Thank you very much for attending.
Thank you.
Bye-bye.
Bye, everyone.